See what you've been missing?
No, I hear you've been eating all the candy though.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, break out.
Yeah. Jake's in charge of the candy.
Okay, well, the good people at Apple say that it is now seven o'clock, so let's bring this meeting to order. Let me press that. We got that. All right, so we have only one item on the agenda tonight. Before we do that, we're gonna take care of some administrative items. Do you have the meeting minutes from the, believe it or not, August 16th meeting was the last time we met? Hope everybody's had a chance to take a look at those. What I'd ask for is a motion to approve them or amend them.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for our August 16th meeting as written.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve and second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Very good. Meeting minutes are approved as written. Tonight's matter. What we have is Mr. Walt Baker representing FG Martin Limited Liability Corporation. I'm not gonna read the tax number. Located at the southwest corner of Commercial and Martin Streets with additional frontage on Oak Street. Applicant seeks to subdivide an existing 2.636 acre parcel into two lots. One will be .75 acres, the other one, oh, at the fronting on Orchard Street. Lot two and the balance of the 1.88 acres will be fronting on Orchard Street, excuse me. The proposed subdivision will include access easement from lot one to lot two. I'm not sure why that's in here, but we're gonna talk about that. And the applicant seeks relief from zoning regarding height and front and side yard setbacks on the property. It is zoned currently G1 General Industry, or GI General Industry. And that's pursuant to Chapter 137, 7525(c). And who's gonna speak for us?
I'm speaking.
All right, what I'd ask you to do is state your name and your position or which area for... And then tell us what you wanna do, because it wasn't exactly clear to me what we're trying to do and why we're trying to do it.
My name is John Gaughier. I'm here filling in for Mr. Walt Baker.
John, could you spell your last name for...
Yes. Here on behalf of DSB on this matter. And we need the various setbacks you mentioned. But the intent is we've got some pre-existing conditions on these buildings. We have a building here and then these buildings along here. And the intent is to subdivide by breaking out this building and into one parcel and then the remainder in a second parcel. The access agreement, the access easement is to provide access from Orchard Street to these buildings on parcel two. The buildings are under, they existed, as I understand it, prior to 1930. And there's been several generations of code changes that have been restrictive concerning the height of a building and its setback that resulted in these buildings needing a variance at this time to do the subdivision that's requested. Also, this one building over here is actually within the right-of-way. And to accomplish that, we're going to deed the property over and relocate that before we appear at planning board for that, so we won't have a building in the right-of-way. So, basic, we've got, it's currently one lot. We wanna break out this existing building and create lot one. And then lot two are the remaining four buildings.
Take a pen or finger or whatever and just draw me the approximate lot lines.
Of the entirety of...
No. Of what you're proposing.
We wanna break out this. So, where this building is and associated parking, we want that to be one parcel. Then this remaining portion of the parcel would be the second. And the other detail we would be removing, this is being, this is located in what's currently defined as the right-of-way. And we're going to revise that, so that the building is outside of the right-of-way. We're not gonna move the building, we're gonna move the right-of-way line.
Wait, let me ask, does the right-of-way have anything to do with what we're doing?
No, that's the province of the Village Board of Trustees.
Thank you, okay.
We're gonna, the proposal is that the village will quit claim a, I forget what it is. It's like 472 square feet, a very small little piece, so that the deck in the corner, the part of that building doesn't sit in the right-of-way anymore. But it has nothing to do with the zoning board or the planning board.
Okay, it shouldn't come into, it shouldn't come into play in our decision at all?
No, so we want the...
I appreciate you telling us, we just wanted to clarify that.
I'm not trying to hide anything here. We want to get the setback and height variances in place to proceed to planning board. And that's what we're appearing, because all of these buildings have both, they're in violation of the current code. If they weren't pre-existing, if we couldn't propose to build those, if they've been there prior to the code.
Okay.
Pre-existing, not conformances.
The owner of the property is...
Mr. Murk.
Thank you. When did you buy the property, Mr. Murk?
Mr. Guck.
Sorry.
About two years ago, but it took a year to close, so we just closed six months ago property.
The only reason I ask that is you made a point a couple of times of telling us that there was grandfathered things in, and they're not conforming use, they were not conforming use when you bought them.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Correct, okay.
And isn't it correct that lot number one is under contract to be sold to somebody? That's the whole reason this is happening. Because he wants to sell the building that fronts on Orchard Street, which has been empty for a while. And he doesn't wanna sell the whole big piece and all the other buildings, so the buyer doesn't want all the stuff in the back.
So that's why you're asking for...
That's why they're asking for the subdivision in the first place.
But also asking for the easement for the driveway, because you could absolutely come off of Martin for that also.
That would be an option, it would be available.
So...
I think it's easier for fire equipment by us having an easement to be able to come in from both of the streets.
So maybe I'm confused about exactly what you're requesting.
Well, again, I'm not sure that's... Again, the easement really has nothing to do with the zoning board. Really nothing to do with the planning board either, but since they own the whole piece now.
Right.
Now, they're not gonna own lot one, but so they wanna retain the right to go across lot one to get back to lot two. So they're gonna do that, if the deal ever closes, they'll retain that easement and the deed to the new owners.
Kinda like selling off the lakefront property and keeping it right-of-way.
Right, so you can get to the lake, yeah, so you can still get to the lake.
Exactly.
Yeah, there's actually five buildings around this parcel.
And it potentially would make the, you know, uses in the back more desirable, because you can access them from both Orchard Street and Martin Street. So not only for emergency access, but, you know, marketability of them also.
Let me try and clarify this then, and not only for myself, but I think a couple of these guys might be. The variance, you're not asking for a variance to construct.
Correct.
What you're asking for is you're creating a new subdivision or new lot. If you create the new lot, it has to be in conformance with or have variance granted for the existing structure.
Exactly.
Yes, I'm there.
If they weren't gonna subdivide it...
We wouldn't be talking.
We wouldn't be talking, because they're all pre-existing non-conforming structures. But because they wanna now create two lots, they either have to be conforming lots now or you've gotta give them variances, but since they don't wanna change anything with the building, so they're asking for variances.
Another business? Gonna buy that lot?
It's a company that's buying it. They're gonna renovate it, operate there.
What kind of business?
I think they do mold, they do everything.
All kinds of remediation.
All kinds of remediation. They rent over on Salt Road now, and they went home.
They do remediation, did you say?
Like with fires and...
Okay, all kinds of remediation.
You know, yeah. They clean places up.
Got it.
Yeah. Crime scene cleanup, stuff like that.
Okay.
Did somebody send letters to all the existing crap of yours within 500 feet?
It was 300 feet.
300 feet?
You guys changed it. Gonna make it 1,000 next month. It was just illegal in the paper on this one.
Well, did anybody send letters?
No, no letters this time.
I don't wanna be a dick, but according to our bylaws, that's a requirement.
Sure.
And if the requirement is not met, we can consider this an incomplete application until it is met.
Certainly can.
So the residents that are at the McAvoy's, the Ginnay, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and Russell, they may not be knowledgeable about this unless they read the paper and saw that.
Right, yeah.
We have to read the paper.
Nothing's gonna happen to any of the buildings.
No.
To anybody, it's gonna look identical tomorrow as it does today. So you could, you know, what would the point be of sending a letter to these people? We're gonna put a lot line, we're gonna...
Well, to let them know what's going on.
Well, there's no legal requirement for sending letters. There's nothing in New York State law that requires letters to be sent to anybody.
There is in our bylaws, our zoning laws, our zoning bylaws, right?
I don't know why a zoning board has bylaws, but that's okay.
Well, we do, and we approve them.
Would it be possible to cure this before we appear before planning board? This is an intermediate step, and nothing even legally will happen until a planning board approval takes place, much less a physical change. Can we cure that problem by getting letters out prior to our planning board appearance?
The purchaser, they're anxious to get in there and start working on the building. They wanna be moved in by February.
They have to come back for planning anyway, no.
Most of the neighbors have all come over there, because they're ecstatic that we've cleaned the place up. Willow will attest to what a disaster it was.
Any changes to the outside surgery?
Nothing to the outside.
You can't, basically, you contact, the neighbors are aware of it, you contacted them or...
Oh, they've been coming over, because they're so happy to see the place get cleaned up, thanking us.
I don't blame them.
I mean...
That big of an empty building in itself, if it ever caught fire, would take the houses next door.
Yeah.
And so to clean it up and have it occupied is a great benefit to the fire department. And particularly the neighbors.
I just, I wanna be sure the neighbors are aware of it.
Well, they've seen us over there working.
It sounds like they are.
Yeah.
As long as the neighbors are aware, and apparently they are.
Oh, yeah.
You have to send a letter or contact them, you know.
Yeah, they've come over thanking us for cleaning it up.
I agree that something oughta happen with that building.
Oh, yeah. These people plan on spending a lot of money fixing it up.
I'm happy.
Any operations, large fans, industrial motors, moving air, something that would be a nuisance to the community?
You'll be staging material there, you won't be operating...
You're not gonna be drying out things there?
No, 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 let's park their equipment inside, keep all their equipment inside.
Got it.
That's it, really gonna keep all the equipment in there.
Need a place to hold your equipment and to park your trucks?
Yes, they said the trucks have to be stored inside, you know, so they'll be keeping their trucks in there.
So what are the actual variances that you're asking for?
Okay. Here's, we're asking for multiple ones on each of the four buildings. For, let's start with 150, this building here.
Is that lot one?
Lot one. We're asking for a setback variance. The existing setback is 20, front setback is 20 feet. And it has a height variance equal to, based on the height of the existing building. So, four, we wanna be four feet away, which is its existing...
Is this the front yard you're talking about?
This front, this front parcel here.
I'm sorry, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
150, it has a height of 31 and a half feet on the east side, the front, 22.7 feet. And 1.7 on the west side is the height. The average setback in the front is, it's required to be 25 feet. And it's existing is 19.3. So we need both a height and a front setback on 150. Then on 108, it's 19.9 feet. And the rear setback is 40 feet.
Okay, hang on. That's the required, yeah, well, well.
Well, I read through this the first time.
Very confusing.
Okay. First of all, this one's labeled, this is 150. This one here, that's 108. The next one, the next curb building, 104 and 106. And the last building, 102, which is also labeled.
And they only come into play in determining the average?
Well, yes and no. So what you've got is...
No, 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 you're at all.
So you've got the height, which is the one-to-one for the property line. And you've got the front and rear, which has to be 40, unless you've got the average setback, which I didn't bother doing. It's just easier with the 40. So what you have in front of you, as I did all the math, I got the height of the building. So the top part that you have, okay, is existing. So you've got the address, so for instance, let's look at 150, 150, okay? These are all where it exists right now on the lot line. 10.5 on the east, the north is 19.3, the west is 40.3, and there's the height. So these are all the things we need to look at when we're addressing the variances. So when you do the math then, when you look at, for instance, 150, the height, you need a height variance of 31.5 on the east side, 22.7 on the north side, and 1.7 on the west side. On the front, the average setback, I actually did on that one, is 25. The existing is 19.3, so you need a variance of 5.7.
That was clear, the height was not.
Okay, so should I do the rest, or, oh, please, please, please. I'll bill you when I'm done here.
Yeah, okay.
So now we're looking at 108 Commercial.
Okay.
So the height of 108 Commercial is 20 feet. So the south property line is .1, so you need a 19.9 variance for the height on the south, or on the rear side of the south side, okay? So if you look at the rear, it's like right on the property line. Point one, so you need a 19.9 variance for that, okay? Then you need a rear setback of 40 feet for that. Front side, you don't have to worry about, because you've got plenty of room there. And then the next curb building...
We need a 40-foot variance for the...
For the rear, for the rear setback, yeah.
That's how huge it sits on the property line.
That's correct. Or 39.9, you know. Okay, so 104, 106, that's the other curb building, the one that we affectionately call the Swiss LA. Okay? The height on that is 30 feet, okay? That one sits, again, right on the property line, so you need a height variance on the south, which is the rear, 30 feet, because the building is 30 feet, so it's the one-to-one, right? On the front, you need a 44.5 variance for the height. And, or, because it's a negative number here, because you've got the village right-of-way, like all the other properties, so it's actually a negative number, you know what I'm saying? So if the height, see, these guys are not, if the height is 30 feet, but we're approaching 14.5 feet, so now you've got a negative number, so it's 45.5 or whatever, yeah, 44.5, you see what I'm saying now? Unless, but we don't have the quick claim deed yet, so we have to work with what we've got. Once we get the quick claim deed, this'll be, you know, a different number, but we have to work with what we've got now. Right, sir? And then the front and rear are both 40 feet, because they're both, again, right on the property lines, you know.
So does it need another variance when they get the deed it off, deed off, or do whatever they're gonna do with that piece? Does that mean that changes?
No, because if you were to grant, if you were to grant a 44.5-foot variance, they don't need...
We'd have more than enough.
You'd have more than enough, because the variance is greater than what they're actually gonna need after the quick claim deed. All right, there you go, last one, 102 Commercial. So the existing is, it's .2 feet from the south, .9 feet from the north, and 8.7 feet from the east, and it's 30 feet high. So the variances then, you need a 29.91 for the north, for the height. 29.8 for the south, which is the rear, and 20.9 from the east side, okay? And for those of you who need to know their directions, north is this way.
It's always towards the lake, Will.
And Walt didn't put the...
Yeah, he did.
Where is it?
We put it down there.
Oh, there it is, okay.
He wouldn't, he wouldn't...
There we go. And then front and rear is 40 feet for a setback.
So you've expressed the height in what they need as a variance.
Correct, you can change, you can do whatever you want with it. I just did the math. Those are exact numbers according to, if the plan's correct, so if you wanna route it off, that's fine.
And the question always comes, do we do these as four separate variances and attach one to each property?
It's all one tax ID. Well, I mean, for the owners, it might be easier for the addresses. Yeah, they, yes, I do them separately for each of the buildings.
And so attach it to the address number?
Right.
Could we simplify this and just grant the variances as or defined in this document?
Attachment aid, although without Will's very nice explanation, I'm not sure, you know, like 20 years from now, if somebody's gonna, if somebody's gonna understand this since, you know, because I agree with the chairman. At first glance, I understood the front and the rear stuff, the height was confusing very well. But when you explained it, it makes sense, so... I almost did the math on there, so you knew what I was doing, but I didn't wanna use more than one page. It's right small, hand notes. I think your findings, you know, the five factors you're supposed to look at, I think your findings can apply, you know, to each of the buildings, since they're all pre-existing, non-conforming, they've been there forever, predating the zoning code.
Seeker on this, Will?
Yeah, it's a type two for the variances.
It's a whole day for this, but, Fire Protection Board, you need the speedway?
I'll explain. What Mr. Baker was just referencing is we're a board of five people in a normal case. By code, you have to have an affirmative vote of three to carry the variance. I always give everybody an opportunity, go A and come back, and I'll call the board back into session on a regular basis until we get that five votes, if that's what you're looking for. Or, it's your choice, you can go forward with what you've got right here.
I don't, because I need, I'm not hearing great ill-converancy, I think we'll put our faith in the board we have here.
The eyes.
Thanks, Bill, really appreciate it.
Then you need to open up for public comment.
Yep. Does anyone have any other questions, understanding, make sure that they understand just what's being asked for. Bill? Larry?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, would anyone from the general public like to talk for or against this particular project?
Brick Waller, 20 Elm Street.
I think I'm in favor of this. I mean, these buildings have been there forever. I remember when there was another building right in the middle of that lot.
Yeah.
And much, another large, oversized building. And I think this would be a great improvement to what they look like and what's going on there now, is empty buildings that are self-deteriorating, to bring them in and get them, some of them sold and fixed up and bring more industry or more business into the village. It's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ditto.
Okay, we'll close that portion. Larry, it looks like you've got at least another question among yourself on what you're.
Yeah, Mr. White, I did, on the notes from the village planning board, we need letter D. You made a comment that, uh, there's a second line, the building's being sold, so you shouldn't have the right-of-way going through one, is that the corner?
Gotcha.
Oh, is that what you're talking about?
So what was your question again?
I'm confused by your statement, I'm not sure I understand what this, what you're referring to, Larry.
It was a little out of context, because in, in, when, in the planning board, they were just talking about the variances that would be needed for 150 Orchard Street. Because really, that's all the planning board was considering, was that building and the access easement, and they really weren't as concerned with the back. So I wanted them to say, well, they also need variances for lot two also. They were focused more on lot one. So I was, that's why I said it at the beginning there. And it says that the buildings result sometime in the future, you know, I talked to them about trying to alleviate on 104-106, where the building sits in the right of way, that's what I said, can say, sentence, the references.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions, clarifications? I think the only thing left then is a motion for or against. To remind you guys, the recommendation has come to us that we do four different variances attached to the individual property addresses.
First, I'll make a motion that this, that the planning board, excuse me, the zoning board can declare the lead agency in this matter, and that we, it's a type two action under secret.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got it seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Zoning board is the lead agency for secret. We're going to deal with that.
And also, at this time, Will wants to place onto the record that the, the application is exempt from being submitted to the Monroe County Planning Department pursuant to an agreement between the county and the village of February 24th of 1994, which exempted, there's a schedule here, which exempted applications for, 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 here's it, Will, here it is, for, this one? Oh, it was, oh, because there are no lats being created along a county or state road. The only additional lat's being created on Orchard Street, which is not a county road, it's not a state road either. So the village doesn't, you have to submit it to Monroe County Planning pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 239 AM. Otherwise, you'd have to wait.
So noted.
To get their comment.
Now, for, just while you guys are thinking about this, if I do this properly, what Will has done, has gone through the math, particularly on the height variance, because that is the, that's the one that's probably not as, it's straightforward, but, you know, it reads, "No structure shall extend above any of the planes inclined at a slope of one foot vertical per each horizontal, rising upward over the lot from each of the property lines." Will has gone by through that. And I, I think we can, we can certainly make his calculations part of the record, and I would recommend that we do that, but I think we go through the variances, one property each, and it's pretty simple, he's, he's listed the variance needed for each one on the height. He's listed the front setback for Orchard, commercial's rear, uh, commercial front and rear, and commercial front and rear, so it's, it's pretty, pretty straightforward, at least now at this point for me. It wasn't when I came in here.
Yeah, if you want to do it by one resolution or four resolutions, that's really a.
I would do it by four resolutions.
I think that's probably, that's probably easier for you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start, make a, make a motion that we grant height for, this is for 150 Orchard Street, lot one, a height variation of thirty-one and a half feet on the east side, twenty-two point seven feet on the north side, on the front side, north side, and one point seven feet on the west side, and a front setback variance of five point seven feet for 150 Orchard.
Very good. So for 150 Orchard, we've got that on the table, I could reread it if anybody needs it. I think Bill, I think Will, Bill did it nicely.
Well, Will did it nicely.
I'll second that.
Michael seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right, moving on to the next property. The property we will deal with now is 108 Commercial.
I'll make the motion for 108 Commercial Street, that we grant the height variance of nineteen point nine to the south property line, and a 40-foot rear variance.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table?
Second.
Mr. Baker seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Do you leave with 104, 106 Commercial Street?
I'll make a motion to approve 104, 106 Commercial Street for a height variance of 30 feet to the south or the rear, forty-four point five feet for the north or the front, and a 40-foot front and a 40-foot rear setback variance.
Okay, we've got that motion on the table?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the last property, 102 Commercial Street.
I'll make a motion to approve 102 Commercial Street for a height variance of, I'm just going to say 30 feet for the north, 30 feet for the south, and 21 feet for the east side, and grant a front of 40-foot front variance and a.
Setback.
Or setback variance and a 40-foot rear setback variance.
As stated, we've got that on the table. Seconded. Seconded by Mr. Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Very good. Okay, we'll take care of that for you. I know you still have to come back to planning.
I just like, I'll be ready for.
Very good. Thank you. Are you free then, I will?
I think Will's going to represent you.
Will, I think you ought to step out for a second, then, you know, give your business card. Can't do that. All right, Mr. Will, any, anything coming for January?
Yeah, what we have in January, do we know? Yeah. Trying to think what it is. No, they're covering the planning. Because we have four for planning, I'm trying to think of what's coming for zoning. Don't get old.
It really is, that happens more frequently, the older you get.
Yeah. Can't remember if any of those planning ones have their variances. There's one coming up, but I know has to come, but I can't remember what it is, 104.
I'll email it to you.
The wireless antenna.
That has to go to both planning and zoning.
So there's a new thing coming out, you're probably familiar with it, it's microcells, where they put it on existing infrastructure, like telephone poles, things like that.
Okay.
So we're starting, one of them got their foot in the door, so now they're all starting to come in. And I believe this one is the one that's coming to.
Barrett.
Barrett Drive, behind the Knights of Columbus, it's right on the property line, just about, so that's where they need the variance because of the height, close, or the location of it. It's supposed to be like 40 feet away from the lot line or something like that.
Question, Phillips Road is progressing?
Yes. That's correct.
Good. Anything else? Okay.
I have a question, maybe for Will or somebody. I attended the workshop in Potavion, North Carolina.
Wonderful.
There were several changes in the secret law. Is it possible for us to get a copy of secret law as it exists with the changes?
What the changes highlighted?
No, there were several, they clarified the definition of what, for example, should be on the, the type two list, type two list items.
Okay, so they changed the list?
They may not affect us, but I think we ought to have an up-to-date copy of.
Sure.
Of the existing New York State secret law.
Yeah, there's type twos and type ones. Okay, yeah, we just need the list, we just need the lists. We'll just, I'll go look at the list and see what's changed and try and highlight what they changed that we, you know, looking around trying to figure out.
Several changes, most of which I don't think will affect us, but.
Right.
Just do want to have a case of dust.
Okay, thanks though. And thanks for going for that. Thanks for going and getting your, your hours, and you should, you're leading by example, Bill. Marijuana too.
You paid the tax, Jim. He might have gone.
Okay, what we need is a motion to adjourn then.
I'll make the motion to adjourn at seven forty.
Three. Motion adjourned, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you very much, gentlemen, and have a happy holiday.
No, I think I did. Let me just press the play button instead of the stop button.
No.